Monica, everything on our agenda we're gonna do? Correct? Okay, we're gonna go down in order. Town of North Andover draft master plan. Hi.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Did you take me or?
I've made you sit till 10 o'clock enough? Alright, so, getting to the end.
Yeah.
So, for anyone who hasn't been closely following the master plan, we're coming to the end of the process. We've had three public hearings, I wanna say, where we've taken input. We've discussed each of the different chapters in the master plan, talked about the different goals, made edits. It has gone to, a draft has gone to the Board of Selectmen. They all reviewed it. Although they didn't vote on any official comments, there were some comments that I believe were forwarded either from the Board or from the Town Manager to Eric. I'm understanding that those edits have been made into this and this is a potential plan for us to vote on.
Yes.
Does that all sound accurate?
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna walk us through changes since the last hearing? And then any kinda comments you have about the entirety?
Sure, hang on just one sec. Since the last meeting, most of the changes were from Andrew and from the Board of Selectmen and most of them pertained to the Public Facilities section. You know, I think I mentioned this maybe at the last meeting, but since this was about a year-long process or a little more, the town obviously doesn't stop doing things while we're doing the master plan. So, there were some changes to reflect the additions of the new kindergarten classrooms, of the, what was, I think, previously called the Middle School Fields Project. We needed to change the title and update that. And a couple, the DPW, we didn't have that as completed. Now that's completed. So, it was mostly stuff like that in the Public Facilities chapter where we needed to make some of those changes.
Okay.
We, I also added a reference in the Economic Development Chapter to recognize the North Andover Business Association.
Merchants Association?
Yes, the Merchants Association, thanks. So, we added them in there as well to recognize them under that chapter. Other than that, I think that was about it.
Okay, great. Are there any members of the public that have anything they wanna say on the master plan? Great, looks like everyone's had their say. Anybody on the Board have anything they wanna say?
I think obviously, I guess. Are we gonna vote formally recommend it tonight?
Yes.
I mean, I'm perfectly fine with that. I think the important thing is that we have the following steps in place because otherwise we probably won't do anything with it, so.
Yep, so I agree with that. So, why don't we, well, before we vote, I just wanted to thank the master plan. Just going back, I mean, this has been, you know, a year, two years in the making. So, Eric, thank you to you and your team, our consultants, for doing such a great job putting this together, for answering all the questions. The public outreach was fantastic. To thank the Master Plan Selection Committee and who selected the people who are part of the committee. The Master Plan Committee was fantastic and their input really shaped this, as well as people from the public who emailed, called, came to meetings, attended the different public hearings and the different focus groups and things like that. It really was a great process and I think we learned a lot just in the process and now have a great document to use. I think, I think the point is now that we have a great document, we need to use it. So, thank you and to the members of the Board who really put a lot of time into.
I think a special shout-out to Jean because she did a lot of the heavy lifting.
Jean, Eric, yes, Monica, thank you. We really appreciate all the work you guys put into this concise document. Okay, so why don't we vote? And then we can talk about what there is to do in terms of implementation. So, can we get a motion to approve the master plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have an approved master plan.
Oh.
Yay.
Put it under our pillow here.
I assume that this will then get forwarded to everybody. So, in terms of implementation, there was a big, there was a discussion about this at a couple of the Board of Selectmen meetings, including the last one. And I think that the Board of Selectmen certainly feels strongly and I think they're right that it's, a lot of the implementation is gonna be in their court, especially anything financial. I think from our end, I think anything zoning-wise that people have interests in, I think we should really, you know, take a look at, go through it and bring it to the Board if there's something you have an interest in. You know, I'm very interested in the inclusionary zoning and, you know, an accessory, accessory bylaw. So, I think, you know, those are ones that the Board can work with our own departments to kind of, to start moving. Things that are bigger or that are more interdepartmental, I think, I think it's mostly on the Board of Selectmen. I would certainly, I was thinking maybe we could write a letter or have a letter from the Planning Board offering our services, offering if they wanna have a committee and have someone from the Board staff that committee. I think we'd be open to that or as liaison between different groups. But I think most of it's gonna be a committee or under the rubric of the Board of Selectmen. I don't know, other people have thoughts on that?
The financial aspect, yeah. But I think there's gonna be a prioritization that needs to happen. And I think that's where other Boards and committees within the town can have a big impact in trying to help the Board of Selectmen prioritize and the Town Manager as well. I think, I think there is a role for a multi-disciplinary committee, implementation committee.
And it seems, that's why I agree. It seems that would probably be something that the Board of Selectmen would have to set up. And I think some member of the Planning Board would be great to be on that, at least. So, I think that's definitely worthwhile. And I think too, we can keep the master plan maybe, I don't know, once every two or three months, put it on our agenda and kinda look through things that maybe we can do, even just suggestions, right? Hey, maybe we can look into this. And just, we don't wanna forget about it 'cause I've seen cities and towns that, hey, oh look, we have a master plan. Fifteen years later, hey, remember that was in the master plan? Or someone pulls it out when they wanna make an argument and said, oh, no, 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 we put in our master plan five years ago that we were gonna do this, so. But yeah, anyone else?
I guess one thing kinda that ties some of those threads together is obviously, I think one of the things that's paramount in the minds of the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen is economic development. And, you know, some fair amount of sophistication in terms of approaches we take for major parcels and major open areas. And I think that's an area where we should try to be very collaborative without, you know, stepping on their feet. But there's obviously, anything that we do of a substance in nature is gonna require potentially a fair amount of zoning. And we should be on board with that and maybe suggesting some approaches to that fairly early in the game, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also say that one of the things we ran into last year with the town meeting was that it was, we realized, we kinda got gummed up at the end in terms of changes that we wanted to bring before the town meeting. And we sort of proactively said, or like, pretty soon, I think, we're supposed to start thinking about what it is that we want to maybe suggest in terms of things that would go before the town meeting. And this might, that might be a good time to tie this in and look back and reflect and see if there's priorities that we wanna pull out and work on in advance.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. I think, I know we talked with Jean about trying to move things earlier in the process. So, even November, December have ideas for what we want for warrant articles. So, maybe we can put this back on in November and use it as a refresher to think of those things that we may wanna start working on for warrant articles. Okay, alright, so we will move on to the master plan. Alright, Ree Street subdivision. Robert Messina, Messina Development Company, Inc., application for definitive subdivision to subdivide map thirty-eight, lot thirty-seven into seven single-family residential lots with municipal water under Master Labor Law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one O, eighty-one T, eighty-one U, the R2 zoning district. Monica, where do we stand with our Ree Street subdivision hearing?
Recently received new smittles. As you see in your plans, there is now the cul-de-sac that is reflected. There's also a redesign of the stormwater system. They readdressed the right-of-way, so hopefully we'll talk about that tonight. This has gone through review with our peer consultant. So, our civil consultant, he says they've satisfied all his concerns. There's still some work that needs to go with the stormwater, so.
And where do we stand in the timeline?
Alright, so our clock expires on October the 27th, which is after our second meeting. So, theoretically, we need to be done by August the 16th or get a continuance.
October 16th?
Yes, so we have a meeting scheduled. Yes, we have a meeting scheduled on the 2nd and then the 16th. So, we're getting close. So, we, I would strongly suggest if we're not, if we need more time to go ahead and take care of that.
Okay.
Good evening, Philip Christensen, the applicant. Bob Messina. As you remember, the last meeting, we came in and we just had a, basically a conceptual of the cul-de-sac to get agreement that we'd go with the cul-de-sac rather than the through street. So, based on your feedback from that meeting, we decided to, well, we've gone with the cul-de-sac design and did all the details necessary. We got that in last week, which is pretty short notice for getting all the reviews done for this meeting. But both your consultants, we got their reviews today. And as Monica has said, TEC said everything. We've addressed all of their issues. There are some issues with your stormwater consultant and we just have to go through that. We don't have, didn't have time to address that for this evening. But we've taken care of one thing that John raised initially was, initially we had the roadway widened by an easement. What we're proposing now is that the roadway will be 50 feet wide, won't be an easement, it'll be land within the roadway. Doing that, we had to readjust some of the lots in terms of contiguous buildable area and lot area because things are pretty tight on this property to get the seven lots with the contiguous buildable. So, we did that work. If you remember also, what we had proposed was curbing with breaks in the curbing and swales running down between the lots to stormwater infiltration areas. Got some feedback from, particularly from Conservation. They didn't like those breaks. They thought there'd be problems when you had snow on the road. So, we've added catch spaces into the street. And we've also added stormwater, proprietary stormwater systems right after the catch spaces to clean up the sediment. And then it'll go into two infiltration areas, one here and one here. Originally, we had five separate areas and they were on the surface. We've had difficulty with people buying lots that have infiltration systems on the surface 'cause they don't like to see the ponded water even though it goes away. So, we decided to put these underground. So, there'd be infiltration underground. We've done infiltration testing out there to verify the soils for that. We have provided a walkway up into here to connect to Abbott Street. We have not provided a sidewalk on this. It's a cul-de-sac, no sidewalks coming from North Cross, South Cross down there and the other end of Ray Street.
Can you orient us so that walkway goes towards the Abbott Street, Ray Street triangle?
Yes.
Okay, and when you say walkway, what do you mean?
That was just a.
Just like the path through the woods?
A path through the woods.
Okay, great.
It's not paved.
Not paved or anything, alright, okay.
So, that's roughly the changes we've made. As I said, your consultant, Planning Board, I guess you call him a technical consultant for Planning Board regs, TEC, says it's fine. But we still have to address some stormwater issues from your stormwater consultant. Still seven houses. Oh, the Beaver Deceiver's been put in place. I understand it's working. That just maintains the water level behind the Beaver Dam. So, no matter how much they build up the dam, the water will still stay at that same level rather than flood the neighbors more than it presently does.
Was there plans for, we talked about a, potentially a gate at the end of the walkway there?
We did not propose one, but.
It seemed, just having gone out there, especially if it's cleared, I think it would be good just to clearly, it doesn't not locked or anything, like, it's just something to clearly indicate this is not a road for travel. You know, just something to say, okay, this is now, we're in the woods and then it's, you just don't want cars to be confused and go down there. I think, I don't care if it locks. I like the idea of kids just being able to move it or push it open if you wanna walk to school. But I think having some sort of gate or barrier just to show that it's not part of the roadway would be, safety wise, would be helpful.
Just out of that, who actually owns the fee in that section from the cul-de-sac? 'Cause it's not on the individual lots.
From the end of the cul-de-sac out?
Yeah, and like, and then where does it become a public way again on the other side?
I don't know where the town actually accepted a public way on the other side. 'Cause that road was built not to subdivision standards. I don't know if it's accepted.
The original, yeah.
Yeah, you know where Ralph Joyce used to live in that extension of the.
The stub, that stub piece?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
As far as any of these roads in town, the old roads like that, the abutters owned to the center line. And any abutter that abuts that road has a right to put it through to get access to their property. So, if you were to draw a plan up, property ownership, you could show to the center line of all of these properties, center line of the street.
Yeah, but when it all gets built, it all goes to the town. The only reason why I bring it up is that I think it ties in with what Eten is saying is that how you deal with it partially depends on the ownership and who can do something to it. And to some degree, it seems intuitively better for, to have just a narrow path through there than anything else. Is that wooded or is it, refresh my memory? I didn't go out.
I think it's not as heavily wooded right there.
So, it's right, there's the driveway, there's a house at the end and a driveway, like, really a high slope. And then it starts out with like wooded on both sides once you get five or 10 feet in. And it's, you know, there's a path there now, but it's pretty, but it is pretty wooded.
I mean, my point is it ends up being self-regulating if you just keep, grab a path, you don't even need to put any.
Yeah, somewhat, I mean, it's just, especially with the driveway there, it's just at the, kinda at the border, it's a little bit unclear of where the road ends and where the.
It does pick up a good question about constructing something on that ownership. But what we would do is just extend it to the end of this project.
Yep.
And if we could put something there.
Which is, I think we need to think about that a little bit.
Yep, okay.
So, I'm not sure I know the answer, so. So, what is the, can you draw where the wetlands are on this property, just to get some context?
Yeah, I think, Monica, can you go back towards, keep going back a little bit more? If you look at that plan, you can see a wetland line. I don't know if you can see those numbers on there? And there's a, if you could point that out. Scroll it up some more. The important vegetation, scroll it up to the top. Move the plan up again some more. And see this, says vegetated wetland? That's the line right there. Scroll up some more and you can see more lots set in them.
See if I can expand it over.
And is all of the upland wooded?
Yes. Yeah, the upland's a nice piece of property. But the wetland beyond that is very extensive.
Yeah.
It's huge.
And where you are proposing the houses generally are pretty level? Is, are the slopes relatively small or are they skewed?
They're relatively mild slopes out there until you get down to the wetland edge. There's a couple of knolls on the site, but.
Because I'm just trying to get at, like, what degree of lot clearance you're gonna have in all the lots?
Well, I think it'd be back to at least here and obviously you gotta clear down here. I'd say, you know, you'd be in through here somewhere.
Okay. I mean, when the smoke clears, we'll wanna put, you know, sort of where you think, you know, the service line is. And I know to some degree you have to 'cause of the conservation, but it would be a good idea to, you know, if there are any very mature trees and species back there, be ashamed to lose them if, you know.
Yeah, there are some good-sized trees back there.
Yeah.
It hasn't been touched in a hundred years maybe.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have comments or questions before we take public comment? No? Okay. So, we will take public comment now. The way, for those of you who have not been here before, welcome. For those of you who've been here before, thanks for coming back. The way public comment's gonna work is if you have comments or questions, direct them to the Board. If you have multiple questions, we'll ask you, ask all the questions, give all your comments. And then if they're questions for us, we can try to answer them. If they're questions for the developer, then we'll wait till you've done all your questions and have them come back, have come back up to answer whatever questions are appropriate. Okay, so, if there's anybody that wants to come up and say something about the project or have any questions, come on up. And please introduce yourself and state where you live.
Hi, I am Beth Williamson. I live at 356 Ray Street, which is this property here. I have a few, quite a few, I guess, questions, comments, concerns. And I guess just starting with the maps. Obviously, my property is going to be pretty heavily impacted by the proposed development with four lots being along my property line. I understand the entrance will be from the North Cross side and there would be no construction vehicles coming in from my side, which I just wanna make sure that is accurate. My driveway is the one that's impacted with the main line going down, the sewer line going down. The water line, although on one of the maps, I noticed my water line is not on there. We were on town water, but we have septic. So, I just wanted to clarify what happens with all of that while I have access to my house, that sort of thing. I didn't understand on map five, there's a trench mentioned. And I don't know what exactly that involves, whether it's like a ditch, whether it's an open waterway, whether it's, I think there was a footnote in there saying it was a temporary structure and then it would be paved over. I don't know if that means the road's gonna come closer to my property line. Also concerned about the vegetation in the area to your comments before. Specifically, you know, what's gonna happen in all this area? Are we gonna be able to leave the trees? This part of my property has hills associated with it. There's a rock wall there, but it's by no means a retaining wall. It's a pile of rocks, which I presume is my property line. I'm in the process of getting a surveyor in for that. But my concern is if we take out trees and stuff along there, is my property gonna slide down into the road? Or is the road being elevated and runoff's gonna come into my yard then? I'm not sure how that's gonna work. Oh, one of the maps, the utilities map lists, I think there was a forced water, forced main water sewer. There's a line on there for G, which I am assuming is gas. I don't know if that's gonna be run and made available to other houses on my end of Ray Street or whether that's just going through to end at the cul-de-sac. Yeah, map seven with the utilities doesn't have the water line to my house. I'm not sure if that impacts anything, but I do have a water line going to my house. I think that was it on there. And then just getting to some of the written documentation. Obviously, if the constructor does go through those construction dust, I just wanna make sure that that's not all blowing into my backyard. My property's protected. There's mention that the land's gonna be donated to the town. Curious as to what the town can use that land for, whether it's, I don't know, just as a town person.
I think you mean the road.
Well, I, no, in connection with this, I understand there's two lots that are gonna be given to the town in North Andover. And I don't know.
There's the wetland there.
Connecting more towards like a mosquito brook.
Sort of unrelated to this, this property down along here. I think it's a total of 17 acres, so it's gonna be conveyed to the town.
If you look on this first map, it's known as parcel B.
And then above it is parcel A, which I believe is also being conveyed to the town.
Yes.
And so they connect to the, the open space playgrounds that we already have, so I manage this more.
They connect to Reynolds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just, I'm not exactly sure what it'd be used for, but something in connection with just having more space there.
Okay. So, forgive me, I'm just gonna go through the written section, section by section. The water pollution, I'm just concerned. I just wanna make sure there isn't runoff for the road back onto my property, which I'm not sure. Given where the cul-de-sac is, I think that's the fairly leveled part of my property, but I just wanna make sure. Sewage disposal, I don't know, I'm on septic. I don't know if sewer lines are going by my house, if they'll be connected to my house or can I connect to them or what happens with that, whether I just don't do anything or. And then with public services, if this road goes through, I was wondering if we could propose renaming it to something other than Ray Street. In the 16 years I've lived at my address, countless, still countless cars come to a screeching halt when they realize that they cannot drive their car through the woods. Confusion, they turn around, they drive up on my mulch, turn around, figure out how to get to the other side of Ray Street. I think especially if, you know, God forbid, we ever have fire companies, police in from other towns, not familiar, they're not gonna know what's going on on that road. And if they had to access somewhere, it just, it would delay. So, I would just propose naming the other street something else from a public perspective. And then it talks about highway. Construction access to the site will be from either Abbott Street or Summer Street side of Ray Street, which the Abbott Street would be my end of the street, which I presume there would be no construction access from that side since that would be kept as a wooded area with the exception of whatever's determined with the walking path, whether it's a wooded path or whatnot. And I think that's it, other than I do disagree with our comment on visual, that it won't be seen from anywhere on Ray Street or North Cross because I, I'm gonna be able to see four new homes behind my house where I currently have wooded property. So, it's a huge impact to me and I'm just curious about those items.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of them that we can deal with. You know, construction dust is something that we require in all the plans, there to be a plan for. So, I don't, we don't have that right now, but we always require, you know, certain staging and mitigation. There's that, we, that's part of pretty much any, we always require that. And I'm not too worried about that. The runoff, we're still awaiting our. The runoff, we're still awaiting our stormwater consultants. They just finished their review and we'll get comments back on that. So hopefully we'll have something for the next time that everyone can look at in terms of stormwater. Street name, could we get, could we get some opinion from, or information from someone about how that happens? Actually, I think that's a good idea, and I know other people have raised that.
Yeah.
I would think the only possible complication is that there's another part of Ray Street that's over there that may impact, it makes a lot of sense, but it's.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's, I'd be interested to hearing somebody from that part of Ray Street today if they wanted to have their street changed. I think if I did it, I probably would, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is. Is it change everything? Is it just change this part? Make it re-court or re-drive or something?
What you would do is you would, the new street plus the, the existing houses on that side of Ray Street, you would change, and then you would also change the stub street, you know, where you live. You would change that too, because that's not the same street.
And you have to change all the deeds and things like that.
That's what I mean. It's not, maybe not as easy as it appears to be, but it's, it's something we should consider, because I agree.
This is something that's been brought up to DPW, and I haven't received comments back yet, but I've asked them to address that because this.
Could you, could you ask Suzanne to look at it too? I mean, I know DPW has, they're usually responsible for like new addresses and stuff like that, but changing street names, I'm not sure if that's the Board of Selectment or if it's a town meeting thing. Might be a town meeting, you know, warrant article, but there is a lot with, with different deeds and things like that. It, they're, it can be complicated, I'm assuming, but it's worth looking into.
I'll get us, I'll get some information about that, and I'll, I'll bring that.
Okay. So, the four questions that I have remaining, I think that we'll, I can summarize this. Construction vehicles, do you have a plan for where they're gonna be coming in and what you're gonna be using?
Well, we have to connect the sewer force main. As you remember, we're putting in a pump station to pick up fifteen houses on North Cross, South Cross area, as well as a subdivision, and then that has to get pumped up this street and up, tie up into Abbott Street. So.
Which way are you gonna go?
The pump station will be here.
Oh, so you will have to go through.
With that.
And then also, the water department wants the water looped. So we have to start the water here and connect into wherever that is. I don't, it's not clear to me where the eight-inch line ends, you know, so we have to connect into the eight-inch. And if, we do have to connect to the eight-inch, it's just a matter of where that is. So that may affect her connection, but she would be connected to the new line if we have to go beyond her property to connect into the existing eight-inch. But if, if, if what went in there was, you know, sometimes you have a, a main line and they take a two-inch line off and then put a house service off that, we can't connect into that too. We have to go all the way, so I'm not sure.
Well, I would, what, it seemed to me that, sort of two takeaways from that, is that one is if you do have to extend the, the sewer line through, obviously there's, certainly, you gotta keep that part of the property open. You can, you can't let it get retrieved. And then you would require easements, is that how you would handle it, or?
No, it's, it's in the right-of-way.
It's in the right-of-way, yeah.
So, so it'd be the force main and then the water line. Now, as far as the gas goes, initial talks with Columbia Gas. So your guess is as good as mine. It was originally, they wanted to loop it right through, but we have no idea, not what's gonna happen with that. But force main and water line both would go through there. Obviously not roadway construction. All the roadway construction work would come from the North Cross end, but we, obviously we have to go up there to do that work and to build the, the walkway.
And what about, I think if there was a trench mentioned?
We do have a, it shows on the plan that there's a stone trench through here. We've got runoff, comes down from the north, and then we take that water and bring it into some catch spaces. There's very little runoff from this area because it's all ace soils with forest. You do calculations, it shows almost nothing. It's when you clear the forest to put in a lawn that you have a problem. So, when you look at the numbers.
Just see, the runoff from this area is very minimal. It comes down, it'll hit this trench. It's a stone trench with perforated pipe, and that water will be taken down around into our stormwater areas.
But getting at, it would all be in the right-of-way.
It's all within the right-of-way, yes.
And how deep are we talking about it? What does it look like visually?
It's two feet wide, three feet deep.
Is that the only one? The trenches that need to be put in?
Yes.
And the water flows from the properties that are already there?
North, south.
So it won't be flowing onto her property, it'll be flowing off of her.
Right.
Right now it flows. Heck, if you look at it just in gross contours, you'd say this is higher and this is lower, the water's gonna flow this way. What happens with a lot of these old walls is that soil builds up around the edge of the walls over the years. So really, the water comes down and it's probably gonna stop behind this wall and it drains down this way. But for conservative design purposes, you assume it's getting through, and it's gotta be collected.
But yeah, as she said, it's just, you know, it's old farm walls there, you know, nothing fancy, but things we're used to seeing.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's good for, for that comment. Anyone else want to?
Rick Green, 357 Ray Street. Just a couple of comments in terms of the walking path. I would suggest pipe bollards, similar to what you see on trails in the woods, rather than a gate. The other thing about the walking path is that's likely gonna be inaccessible in the winter. That's the only spot that the town pushes the snow to on that dead-end part of Ray Street, so just understand that that'll be likely inaccessible. In terms of the naming the new cul-de-sac, I agree with that, but my suggestion would be to consider that the houses on the other end of Ray Street towards Summer Street, maybe that's continued as North Cross, rather than part of the new subdivision, because the new subdivision is a separate road in itself. So that would be my suggestion if there were a name change, and I can tell you that one of the residents on that part of Ray Street would be in favor of changing it, because right now, they have the same problem we do with my end, is that people with GPS can't find their house. So that would be, that would be my suggestion. That's it, thank you.
Any other comments? Nope. Nobody else had anything to take and want back?
I just wanted to make one suggestion with the walkway. Plenty of people walk down that path now. It's a wooded walkway. I would suggest maybe keeping it a wooded walkway versus a paved walkway.
I think that, that is, as far as I understand, that's the plan.
Okay. Just the combination of my driveway and then another paved surface just invites somebody to drive down it, which.
Thank you.
Agreed. Okay. So, we're waiting on the stormwater.
Yes.
Is there anything else we're waiting on?
Comments from DPW, which will include probably their, their analysis on, on the stormwater as well.
Likelihood of this, of those things all being ready for next Tuesday?
That is, I, I think things are a little delayed because of the gas situation. But I, I will try and push as.
Let me ask Apple, are you guys, are you, would you like to be on the agenda for next Tuesday, or do you like to be on the?
Next Tuesday or two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's next week, October 2nd and then October 16th.
No, not October 2nd.
So I think October 16th, with, if everything is completed, then the intention would be to hopefully vote on that date, otherwise we need a continuance, but.
What I would suggest is probably signing the paperwork, just in case something happens and the meeting's delayed.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll let you guys.
We can get to something.
I mean, yeah, how much do we need, do you think?
If you, if you take care of this, the stormwater and, you know, if we resolve the issues with the stormwater, maybe another, another meeting. It looks like we're getting, we're getting close.
So let's do the first meeting in November and a couple days after that. You okay with that?
That's fine.
Yeah, and if, you know, if we get it done before that, great.
Yeah, I mean, because then, I would make a motion to we accept the applicant's continuance until three days after the first meeting in November.
Continuance of the.
Time to render a decision.
But we'll still put it on for October 16th.
Yeah, still put it on for that, yeah.
The motion to accept a applicant's continuance of the time period until, what, what's the date of the first of the meeting in November?
Let me grab my calendar.
We not meet the first because of the election?
Yes.
Yes, so.
November 13th, so let's say November, Friday, November 16th.
Okay.
But let's put it on the agenda, so we're gonna continue this hearing for Tuesday, October 16th, and if we have everything we need, then we'll, hopefully we could.
And you, you won't have a meeting for a month then?
Right, so we're gonna work as hard as we can to see if we can get it, to do that on October 16th vote.
We'll push to get the changes.
Okay.
Are we waiting on the Conservation Commission?
Yes, and they meet tomorrow, and I know they're gonna have some questions regarding the, the stormwater, especially on Lot 7, and also these, these two infiltration systems then. And I know the stormwater consultant had some questions regarding those two infiltrations, and they wanna talk with you, so.
All right, so we'll see how things check out. Okay, so.
Thank you.
The Ray Street subdivision is continued until October 16th, 2018? Okay. So if anybody was here for that and wants to, doesn't wanna stick around for the rest of the meeting, feel free. So then we have 1717 Turnpike Street. Connie and Nick Vergatos, consideration of a repetitive petition, application under the town in North Andover bylaw that was Section 10.8 and is now Section 195-10.12. The construction of a new 2,400 square foot commercial two build, two-unit building within the general business zoning district. So, Monica, you wanna walk us through why this is here?
Yes. So Connie and Nicholas Vergatos went before the Zoning Board of Appeals, seeking variances for setbacks, front, side, rear setbacks. They received a, what did it say, a negative finding, and so as a result, they are, they have petitioned under Chapter Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 16, and the town of North Andover bylaw formally noted as Section 10.8 for repetitive petition. And what this allows them to do is to show specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was, was based. And so what they included in our packet was a project description, the application of finding from the Board of Appeals, their various plans, so the one that was denied, as well as one with changes, a request for consent letter, and also elevations for their, for their designs. So again, you're, what you'll be doing is looking at this application and determining that specific and material changes have occurred, and, and this would then allow it to go back to the ZBA.
That's not how I read the ordinance. So, just, because I, this is really confusing to me, because it was a variance by the ZBA. So under Section 10.12, our new Section 10.12B, in the case of a variance denied by the ZBA, they can't act upon it favorably within two years unless the ZBA finds that there are specific and material changes, which they did, right? You already went back to the ZBA.
Yes.
They found that there were specific and material changes, and now we have to have a public hearing with notification and grant our quote-unquote consent to allow them to go back to the ZBA for repetition, which begs the question to me of why? Why if the ZBA has already said that it's, there are specific and material changes?
I always thought that, and this gets into, I think, where, you, you may know better than I, where our bylaw mimics state law.
Yeah.
Because I had always thought that the planning board was the authority to determine whether a petition was repetitive or not, not the ZBA.
If it's.
Maybe it's felt suspenders, you know, here, but it was our role to make that determination, not their role.
So if it's a zoning decision, definitely, and if it was a special permit that came before us, yes, but the way I read this is if it was a ZBA decision, then now we're asked to give consent to allow them to repetition the ZBA.
Yeah.
And I'm just unclear as to what that consent, what do we, what's our standard for consent?
My mind is whether we think there's material changes. I mean, it's the same.
Why did the ZBA vote on that already?
But I think, because I think under the state law, that jurisdiction is with us, in the same way we have that jurisdiction related to zoning, you know.
It is. I mean, under, if you want, I could.
What's the general law?
So it is.
40A.
40A, Section 16. Right, and you'll find, I'll pull it up so you can see it on the overhead, but.
And John, have you had, had these come before the board?
To tell you the truth, I don't think there's ever, I've ever, we've ever had one.
I did find.
I can't remember, I can't remember one that, where that's ever come up.
I, I found two examples in the system. One was from 2002, and one was 2007, but there's not a lot that is, you haven't dealt with this.
It's just weird that it comes back before us when it was a ZBA. Has this, has this project been before the planning board at all?
No.
No, it is.
I agree with John. On all the towns that do work in, any of these things that are denied by the Board of Appeals go to the planning board to determine if it's a material change, and then the applicant can file with ZBA. Having to go to ZBA first here.
Right.
For this was odd to me.
Yeah, it may just be a, sort of a quirk or something we've always had, and nobody's ever really noticed.
Okay. All right, so.
Here it is.
Properly in front of us.
If we skip down, any petition for a variance or application for a special permit?
We're not the permit granting authority in this.
Not for that.
Okay, well, I.
Right, in our town, in the town bylaw here, it, it does say under number two, the Board of, okay, so I'll start again. When number one, the planning board denies an application for a special permit, or number two, the Board of Appeals denies a petition for a variance, no application on the same matter may be heard or acted favorably upon to your period, unless the following conditions are met. In the case of number one, we'll skip over that because it's not applicable, and then in the case of.
Number two, the ZBA finds a specific and material change, and then we grant our magical consent to go back to the ZBA who already found that it was a specific and material change.
Yeah, it actually does say both under the state law. Would you really parse it carefully?
Okay, well, let's.
So wait, so all we need to do is find out there's a change.
I don't even, I find that, it seems to me that we just have to grant our consent, and I don't really know what our consent is based on.
Well, I think our consent is, it's in our judgment, is a significant material change. We have to look at what was there before, we have to look at what is there now, and if there's a certain amount of Kentucky windage in that amount.
They should say that, then. They should say that we find it.
But the state law's in, but you're.
Right.
I know, it's poorly written, I don't like it.
So then, let's, let's make this clear. Your finding is based on specific and material change. There's no definition of what that is, but you have to look at what was denied and what's being proposed now and determine if you agree that that's.
If we agree with the ZBA that there's.
No, if you agree with the new.
Right, but they've already made that determination.
Yes.
Well, we have to basically.
Fine, we can see if they're wrong.
Or not, it's the case we face, so.
So convince us that there is a material change.
Before you start, tell us exactly where this is.
And what you're doing, and what we're doing, what's, what's happening on this project?
We're, we're proposing to move our business, which is currently at 701 Salem Street. It's a hair salon. My husband and I have owned and operated for almost twenty years, and we wanted to take the salon and move it to 1717 Turnpike Street, because they're gonna be knocking down the entire structure where we're at, because they're expanding Taki's Pizza and whatnot. So that's how this all started, when I first came in front of zoning.
What's here now? What's here now?
So...
On this lot?
Yes, it's 1717.
Oh, yeah, it's just an empty lot, it's right next to Prime Gas Station.
Just past the gas station.
Right, right next to, right next to Prime Gas Station.
Right by the road to the subdivision there, right?
Yes, yes, right, almost on the corner of Colton Drive.
So as you're going to Middleton, it's on the right-hand side?
Correct, correct, it's on the same side as Prime Gas Station.
Yeah.
And it is a very small lot, but we own and operate a very small business, just my husband and I working.
How small is the lot?
The lot is total of 15,000 square feet, so it's a non-conforming lot, and that's why we had to go in front of the zoning board for variances.
I guess that blows, but how can you possibly get a variance for something that doesn't deal with soil, slope, and topography?
Shape, soil shape.
No, size, the lot's too small, that's an incurable problem. I mean, I know that's not our domain, but it's, I don't see how under the law you could ever in a million years grant a variance for size of the lot, I'm sorry, I just, yeah.
That's right.
I mean, and I'm not playing to the choir here, this is one of my big pieces forever and a day, is that I don't see how anybody could legitimately grant a variance for that, but that's a different story.
Well, they didn't.
I guess, they didn't, yeah, so, but fair enough, okay, so the lot is 15,000 square feet, yeah.
There's a couple of things with the lot, too, is that when you're on 114, you have to have a 100-foot setback. The lot is only 90 feet deep, so you have to have a variance for a setback like that. So there's a number of variances, and that, they've been submitted through the building inspector's office and what, as it's supposed to be. But what we've done is to make changes in the plan, and that's what you're to decide tonight, is whether the changes are material. One of the things that the abutters were most concerned about during the hearings were the appearance of the building.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on. Everyone, this is a public hearing, everyone will get a chance to have their say when it's their turn, okay? So I do not want to hear comments when we're asking questions, when they're making comments. We don't need applause, we don't need boos, we don't need any of that. So let, we're gonna ask them questions, they're gonna give us statements, if you disagree with any of it, you'll have your turn to come up and say that at the appropriate time. The second part, even though I'm confused about why it's here, it's not here to determine whether or not it deserves a variance, okay? That is for the ZBA. Our job, as I understand it, is to determine whether this is materially different than what was presented before, not whether it's a good idea, not whether we like it, but whether it's different, right? So that's, so if you have comments, I would strongly suggest you focus it on those. Okay, back to where we were.
If you see what Monica has on the screen now, structural style. So in the package you have provided, there was, this, this drawing of what... What the original style was that was submitted.
Do you want this on here?
Yeah.
And what we've done is to get a different style for the building, which is this, and we think it follows along with what was in that, that it's more New England-looking than what was originally proposed. So that's in your packet of information.
So, can you say exactly, you've said what the setbacks are, and the, do you have the, like, the lot coverage ratio from before versus now? I mean, because I think our determination is more on variance requests than it is on the design of the building.
Well, not according to that piece, that document that was up there.
Well, that, yeah, but whose document was that?
Well, I, I do have the denial letter from the ZBA.
Okay, okay, so...
Those were the three topics when it was denied, those were the three main, they were actually the only three subject matters that were referred to at the zoning board meeting when it was denied, those were the three topics from the meeting.
Who, who wrote this letter? Was this from the ZBA, or was this something?
This letter that's up here now?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
I did, and I specifically went through each, went through the meeting and went through each and every comment that was made, both by the board and by the neighbors, and I addressed every issue, and I did that the first time as well, but at this second meeting, when it was denied, these were the three topics that were discussed repeatedly, most importantly, the structure style. It was deemed too cosmopolitan, the design that I had set in, which I'm more than happy to work with and change, we were there for zoning, but I did go ahead and change it, and as opposed to being a stucco cosmopolitan building, we changed it to a New England style with a cupola siding, and so we changed it drastically from what was presented at that meeting.
So in the ZBA's decision regarding specific and material changes, they stated that the size of, that the, based on the planned materials and testimony presented, the board finds that there are specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the board's previous denial is based, specifically that the size of the proposed building has been reduced, front and side setbacks have been increased, and the design of the building has been revised. So that's at least what the ZBA was looking at for in terms of specific and material.
Well, those were the specific things that they had brought up at the meeting before that it originally was denied for, so those were the specific and material changes that were made, setbacks, size, and style.
So can you just, can you just again summarize the changes in terms of, I think you just talked about the changes in terms of the design, but just in terms of the, how the building has been reduced and how the front and side setbacks have been increased?
So originally, we had, the structure size was 2,900 square feet, we had taken it down to 2,600 square feet, and since then, we've reduced it to 2,400 square feet. So additionally, from that last meeting, it was another 200 square feet smaller, and again, given the size of the actual lot, and having done a cost analysis on the building, that was the absolute smallest building you could put on that size lot and still be able to maintain the, the building itself and be able to have it be cost-effective. So we did do that, and we made the building smaller to 2,400 square feet, and that's about as small as we can go. And we also increased the setback, the building and the parking originally was very close to the street, the parking now is almost in line to where the building starts, which was another, an additional five feet setback from the street, so it's now at 31 feet from the street, and the parking barely lines up with it, so everything was pushed further back so that it wouldn't be close to the street, so that we could go as far possible as we could with that setback. So once we reduced the structure size, we pushed it all back, along with the parking.
One of the comments at the meeting was that turning into this driveway, there wasn't enough room, if you look at the drawing on the left, coming off 114 is fairly short before you had to park, so that's part of the reason that parking's moved back, is to comply with what people raised as issues the first time around.
Okay.
So Monica, question, is there a provision in the GB in terms of side and rear setback where it's abutting residential neighborhood?
Yes, you need an additional 15 feet.
So what does that make?
When you, when you abut a residential area, you need additional 15 feet, so that both sides of the property are in the same zone as this, the rear is residential.
So what is the requirement then, in rear?
I think we have it here, just one second. Rear is 35 feet plus 15, so it'd be 50 feet.
So this is GB?
And do you, again, Phil, do you have, what is the lot coverage ratio originally versus the lot coverage ratio now?
I do not.
Is it all one-story?
It's what? One-story.
One-story. So it would be 2,400 divided by the size of the lot, right?
15,000, right, so...
15,000 versus 29, okay.
15,300, you'd say.
Does the GP have a floor coverage ratio provision?
Yes, 35%.
It's under that.
Actually, you do discuss the lot coverage here, I'll bring this up. I'll try and bring it up. Are you owning and operating both businesses? Look like there's a bridal shop proposed on one side.
No, no, that was just, we put that in because we thought it was pretty, just to have, to show something to be there. We are planning, we would like to have it all be salon-related. I have a girl who's a manicurist who's interested, I did have a letter at the last meeting from Elizabeth Grady, I do have another esthetician who's interested, so we basically wanted to keep it all salon-related, but maybe give them a smaller section on the side, a separate entrance, so that they could kind of run independently from us, so.
Any else have any questions? Comments? All right, so at this point, why don't we hear from anyone who wants to speak on this? Again, I just want to emphasize what our role is tonight, our role is to find whether or not there are specific and material changes, not whether it's a good idea, not whether a variant should be granted or not, when, if, if it ever, ever goes back to the ZBA. So I'll give you some latitude, but please try to focus on that issue.
Will do.
All right.
My name is Chris Carter, I'm at 15 Colonial Avenue, and...
This is my property right here.
So I have a few things to discuss, and I want to kind of, you know, tell you that the zoning board, I feel, had gotten off-topic by discussing aesthetics. They're not there to discuss what the house, or the business should or shouldn't look like, they're there to look at the variances and the plan themselves. So the parking lot and the building itself, if you look at the before and after, barely changed. You know, they were talking about the 2,900 square foot to 22, 2,400 square feet, the plan that was denied was 2,600 square feet, so you're talking, the percentage of 15,000 is very minimal. So I think that, you know, when considering that the aesthetics were a large portion of the zoning board's decision to decide that these were material changes, may not be the most effective way to say that these were actually effective, as material changes. The plan was denied for a reason, it's a very large structure on a very small lot. I agree that, you know, having 100-foot setback on a 90-foot plot of land is unbuildable. If there's gonna be something in there, fine, let's build something that fits the size of the property, not something we're trying to squeeze into a large plot of land. So I, as you probably heard, I'd asked you to take a look at all the neighbors that are unanimously against this, this plan, and while we have lots of other things to consider, we're here to discuss the material changes, that's not material. You can't even tell from where you're sitting that those are different. I think that that is squeezing a couple feet off of each side, that's not changing. We're, we're keep coming back. The repetitive law is to prevent us from having to keep coming every month to these meetings to say, oh, yeah, we've changed it, we've looked at, look, the law states so that we don't have to keep doing this, and they came back with changes to the aesthetics to the zoning board. That's not, in my mind, what I think that they need to discuss. So that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Kendrick from 20 Colonial Avenue, we're still abutters. As you can appreciate, the residential quality of where we live is unusual on 114. I think we're the first residential high-quality development coming from Mayor Matt College toward Middleton. So my wife and I moved in there 20 years ago, we were the first to buy, and it's been a glorious time, it's a garden paradise, lots of families there, children all over the place, they've been raised, and new generations have come in. So I'm just here to ask your support, to think seriously about the impact on the families that live there, if more traffic is created, to add to what's already there for the prime gas station, and cut-throughs running right in front of my house where all these children are. Just asking you as parents to think about that, if you would, please, we're worried about traffic. When you come down 114 to come into our street, the neighbors are here, they'll tell you that they're worried about getting plowed into from the fast traffic on 114. By adding another kind of prod, a place like this with 12 parking places, it just adds to the traffic. Thank you, at least keep that in mind.
So I thank you for coming down, we actually can't keep that in mind, that's not really a consideration unless, unless somehow that's a change from the last plan, I don't see that the parking is different, is it different from the last plan in terms of the numbers?
No.
So again, I appreciate the, the comments and your sincerity, and we're just, good or bad, traffic itself, we're not really going to consider it this hearing, it's any changes to the plans that affect traffic and whether they're material or not. I actually haven't seen any that are really material, which, so, all right, anyone else? Sir?
Thank you, Tony Onello, 112 Colonial. The term "material" is defined as important, essential, or relevant, and I think, you know, if you take a look at these two side by side, maybe on all sides, for, on three of the four sides, it seems that a variance would be needed to meet three of the four sides. You know, they, they talk about changing some of the footage, changing some of the square footage, not by a material amount, in my view, it's pretty insignificant. What's, what's material would be the impact on the traffic, the impact on the proximity to the house behind them, the, the impact on any abutters, the impact on what it looks like to pull into Colonial Avenue, and a cosmetic change to a, I don't even know this term, a cupola siding is immaterial, thank you.
So before you, no, no, you're fine, Lynn, we'll get to you, ma'am. So just for the board's edification, I just, while we've been listening to these people, I've also been doing just some research, so a couple of things. And at least when I think of material, at least in the legal sense, I think of contracts and something, a material term of a contract, if you really, if you take it out, then the contract really isn't the same. So that's at least when I, and it's something that if you don't do, then the other side doesn't have to perform, okay? That being said, the law seems to say, and I'm looking at Ramney versus Board of Appeals of Nantucket. Okay, so that case says that it's really up to the local board to consider this, and the gentleman was right about, from before, that, you know, the purpose of the law is that people don't have to be coming back. On the flip side, we also don't want properties that nobody can use, so if there is something different, we want really properties to be able to be used and owners to be able to do that. And the cases say that it's not a high bar for what is a change, so it says the board may give way to differences which in an absolute sense are relatively minor. So they give some examples, construction of a brick wall along frontage, relocation of access, limitations on proposed use. And the case then goes on to basically say, if it's really, really different, then you don't even need to come back and do this, because then it's a different proposal, right? If they came back and said, we're building a motel, you know, or, or a donut store, it's just a different proposal, so you don't even have to go through this, so it's, there's gotta... So, it's, there's got to be some range of changes that are important enough that, that you can do this, but not so extensive that, that it's a new proposal. And there's some that aren't important enough that it, it doesn't qualify. And I'm not judging where we are yet on that, but just for everyone's kind of thought process is, that's kind of how I'm reading the law and what we have to decide on. So...
Could I say that?
Yes. Phil, do you have any copies of that case? Do you have a copy of that, or?
Yeah.
Maybe we can make copies of that. Do you want to read them?
The color was issued on that.
Yeah. What's that?
It changed the color.
Yeah.
And that was material change.
And I could see that sometimes, so, okay. That's just, just for...
Good evening. My name is Caroline Castaldo. I live at eighty-five Colonial. And I'm going to stay on topic to the material and significant.
Thank you.
I believe that the changes to the project at seven-seventeen Turnpike Street do not meet the significant immaterial criteria. There's also, you know, we can get into this, but there are several cases in Massachusetts that have been before the appellate courts that have defined material insignificant. And I don't want to get into, because we could go on forever, but when you compare these changes to changes that have been heard by the appellate court, they're not anywhere near where they should be. The fact that, you know, moving the parking lot back, and I know because I brought that topic up because I felt coming on a, a straightaway that's going forty-five miles an hour into that parking lot was unsafe. However, moving this is not really that material. And now, what you're doing is you're causing more detrimental impact to a residential neighborhood, which is something any planning board and zoning board, I think, should be concerned about. So, I guess when we look at this for material and significant, you're, you're trying to shoehorn a, a project onto a small piece of property. So, it's almost like, no matter which way you move, it's not going to be material, it's not going to be significant, and it's detrimental. It's detrimental in either way. Either you're too close to one-fourteen, or you're in the backyard of a resident that's been living there, that's, that is a residential neighborhood. So, you know, to material and significant, the, the changes aren't big, the impact is detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think that is, is a, is a consideration for both the zoning board and a planning board. The reduction of this structure by two-hundred square feet is immaterial. I mean, I'm an accountant, people are attorneys, material, immaterial, that's not a big change. It's definitely not a big change. And, you know, we, we did propose, the material significant change in the zoning and planning would have to be a significant reduction in the size of the building. The building, if we wanted to do a material significant change to the building, we should have made it a smaller structure. A smaller structure could go on that in a much safer, significant manner. It, it doesn't, you know, it, the small two-hundred-square-foot change is not a big change on a property that's trying to be shoehorned onto a lot that is really basically unbuildable. I just think we're trying to be way too aggressive on this particular plot of land with this. You know, it could have been a singlestructure solo business. I think we all should know that profitability is never a reason for variances. I mean, you know, I know that's a little off-topic, but that's a fact. So, again, just please take into consideration the change in the size of the building not being really material and significant. The, the change in the, the parking lot is now much more detrimental and impactful to the neighborhood. So, again, any way you move this structure, unless you make it smaller, it's always going to be not material and significant and detrimental. And I think those are things that we need to think about so that we keep the character of this area, you know, passable, safe, and aesthetically decent-looking. So, I mean, I, that's what I, I would just beseech you to keep those, those things in mind because I just don't see where we've made these significant immaterial changes. There are very little architectural changes to that building. It's small, and it's, it's a two-storefront property. It could have been a single solo business. That would be more appropriate in this particular location. Thank you.
Can I just, can you bring that with the questions that she just brought up?
Sure. Can I ask a question and then?
Sure.
So, I just, the two-hundred feet that came off, where, how is that allocated?
The building was twenty-six-hundred square feet. We brought it down to twenty-four-hundred square feet. And that was actually something that was brought up at the last meeting when the zoning board approved the changes because, given the size of the lot itself, they, they deemed that it was substantial because of the fact that the lot is so non-conforming, it's so small, it's difficult to put anything that will be profitable on that lot because it's just such a small lot. So, we are trying to do something as small, shall we say, but yet as small as possible, but yet economically responsible as well, to be able to substantiate the expenses that a building is going to cost. So...
But my question was...
It's important to, to consider, and John asked this question earlier about lot coverage. You know, we're at sixteen percent, but the regulation is thirty-five percent. So, when you talk about, is the building too big? It complies with zoning regulations, so the, the fact that people discuss it as being too big is really a non-zoning issue in a way. If we comply with the zoning regulations...
Well, you, I think you've been a little bit disingenuous there, that, that is based on the minimum size lot in the district, not on something that's...
Well, it's thirty-five percent lot coverage on any...
Yeah, I know that, but the...
And so, we, but we comply...
They require a lot of variances.
We, we require a lot of variances, there's no doubt about that. All I'm saying is, in terms of the size of the building for the size of the lot, we comply with that requirement that the zoning regs. And I do agree with the gentleman that came up first that, you know, architectural style shouldn't be part of the zoning board's decision, but that's...
But it was.
But, but, you know, that's the way it is, so we have to deal with what we have.
So, I guess my question was more, so you took two-hundred square feet off, right?
Yes, we did.
But where do I, so, when you had, like, before, if you had, you know, I don't know what you had, but if you had, you know, floors, sinks, and a kitchen, is a...
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
What, what was, what's changed?
So, let me tell you what's changed. The proposed building prior was sixty-five feet by forty feet, and we reduced it in size to sixty feet so that way we would make up the difference in size of the actual structure. The business itself is still going to stay the same. It's a four-chair salon. It's what we run and own and operate right now, it's the two of us working.
Okay. That was my question.
So, yeah, that's staying the same.
That was my question.
And the reason we're showing it as two is because of what I mentioned earlier, because we don't know exactly what will go there, but we are trying to keep it all beauty-related and giving them their own entrance way so that we're not solely responsible for being twenty-four, seven there with their hours, because our hours are limited, salon hours are limited. So, and that's the reason why it shows that, you know, cut in half, just because, for ease of purpose, that's why we showed it that way. So, it's really the structure size that we made smaller to make the whole thing smaller. The, the chairs are staying the same.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes.
If I'm correct, you're basically making the variance in the back greater than it was before.
Correct. We, we, only for the parking. Only for the parking.
No, 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 no. No, they make it has to be, because the side of the building was forty feet before, so the building's side hasn't changed. So, if you take twenty-six plus forty plus thirty-six, that's the same. Now, what you've done is you've moved this back five feet here. This is still forty. That means you've pushed the back that you've created, you've increased the non-conformity in the back.
Yeah. We had to because we had to conform for them to the front.
No, but my point is, you're, you've made the variance worse here in the back than it was before.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We've, we've increased the variance in the back so that we could...
You, you just moved the building back by five feet. That's all you did.
Correct. Correct. Well, no, we moved, and we made it smaller.
You, you made it smaller, but the making it smaller only impacted you here. It impacted you the forty-five feet here.
No. Yeah, but, but, yes, that's correct, but we...
Because the building was sixty before, now it's, it was sixty-five, now it's sixty.
Right.
And so, therefore, by making it, you, you made this, you give yourself a little bit bigger setback there.
Correct.
The front and back, what you've done is you've moved it to the back, so you lowered the variance in the front and you've increased it in the back.
Because they wanted a greater setback from the front. That was a big concern at the last meeting, was taking that and moving everything back. It was too close to the street, so we really had no choice but to push it back a little bit. And we did change substantially the, the, I know you guys have this in there, but substantially the style that was the biggest concern. From a stucco awnings, it was a very cosmopolitan-looking building, which I kind of thought would look really nice, to be honest with you, next to a gas station on one side and the auto body shop down the street on the other. But I had no problem going there, and we went to a, this is even not a final plan. This will probably have a couple of dormers in. We, because of the time constraints, and we did want to show them that we were...
But you do know that the ZBA has absolutely no restriction of that.
Correct.
It's the planning board that does.
Yes. But that's what, but that's what, that's what everybody brought up at the last meeting. It was, it was a very big concern for the neighbors and the plant, and the zoning board was very much concerned with it as well. So, that's why I think it kind of overruled and kind of took over the meeting. So, that's why we changed everything the way that we did.
I have had the ZBA make me change plans because something looked too big. And you can't argue it.
If this does go back to the ZBA and ZBA grants variances, does it come out to the planning board at some point? No?
I don't think so. There's no special permits?
I don't think so.
Well, no, the site plan review.
Is there, is it, is it big enough for site plan review?
Yeah.
Because of the variance or just in general?
No, just in general.
It's over two-thousand square feet.
Okay. So, we come back for site plan review, so...
Yes.
Just, by the way, on lot size, just to mention, this lot was in existence before it was zoned, what it is. So, what happened was, you know, there's a lot there, and then zoning comes in and changes lot requirements.
Oh, I, that's...
Just so you're aware of it.
It's being sold, sold as a business-owned lot, so that's...
So, we come back for site plan review about, you know, where things are and some of the aesthetics.
Correct.
Okay. Are there additional comments?
My name is Judy Parrish, thirty-one Oxford Circle. So, just off Colonial, where this plan is. I think everybody said the significance, but they keep talking about aesthetics, which I know you're not here for, but it's irritating me because I was the one that brought up that comment about the seven-eleven. That was just one small item in the many hours that we were in front of the zoning board. So, to hear that that was all the zoning board was concerned with, that's simply not true. And the zoning board, one of the members actually asked for it to go down to one business, but somewhere that was lost in translation. So, I think, just as everybody else has said, there are two-hundred-foot decrease in the size of the building, two percent decrease in the lot coverage, none of those figures are significant and material. So, I just thank you for your time tonight and, and appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's my comment, too, is I'm trying to think through the couple of businesses that you're proposing, the amount of parking in just a square footage and putting a building on this size, a lot, like, what if, what if all the parking's filled? What if all twelve spaces, considering you're proposing salon-type services as well as, you know, hairdressing?
So, we, we, I made sure that I actually went to the town and I made sure that we are following exactly the right amount of parking spaces that you need for that size building, considering that you'd have your salon. And the salon might take over, it might end up, we might end up doing the whole thing. In other words, we might not have a separate entrance. I don't know what's going to come down the road. The bottom line is, that's the size of a structure that we're proposing to put on that building. And the parking conforms with all the requirements. So, we've, we've covered that basis. I specifically made sure that we did go and make sure that we kind of covered the basis, so we wouldn't have that. And then, that's where that parking comes into play.
So, okay.
And we also have the type of business that, even if you had a third person working, it's my husband and I working, clients typically come and go. It's, it's not a business that you get a lot of pulling in, pulling out, pulling in, pulling out. People come, they're there for anywhere from an hour to two hours, and they leave. So, it's, it's the nature of the business. Honestly, that's a lot of parking for us. We, we function with four parking spaces right now. So, we don't, it's just, it's there because we wanted to meet all the requirements, but technically, the nature of this business with four chairs, you can't occupy that many, even if all four of them are going.
What size is your, is your business right now? Like, how many chairs? And it doesn't have any...
Four chairs. We're bringing this, we're actually just taking it and moving it over.
Shh. Forget just that one conversation. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, again, that, it's good information for us to have, but we're not voting on whether it's a good idea.
Right.
I, I mean, it's a, you're proposing a salon next to a gas station. I'm, I'm personally not really sure what, if any, impact that would have, but I'm not really thinking about it because that's not what we're here to decide. We're just here to decide specific and material. So, if anyone has any more comments about specific and material changes, we'd be happy to hear them.
Hi. My name is Lana Gill, and I live, I'm there, but on the other side, so to the left.
You know, you can just give us your address.
Ten Colonial Ave.
Okay, great.
So, I'm just, you know, just like everybody else, I do not think it's specific and material. I do think we're focusing on wrong thing. I, it's unfortunate that, you know, I wish you guys were part of the original conversations because I think you, you're getting where we're coming from, you know, from the, almost the zoning, you know, part of it. So, the parking situation, I'm so glad you brought up because my street, you know, people already pulling up in front of, you know, my street. And, you know, I was hoping there would be more significant change to the parking lot. It was just pushed a little bit. And I'm very concerned that, you know, there will be two businesses, and that's not enough parking spaces, you know? You have one, I, I understand it's a small business, I get it, but even with one chair, it could be, you know, it could be five, six, seven spaces, depending on people waiting. And, you know, we, the bottom line is, we don't know what the second business will be. So, we don't know on the parking situation, and people will be parking on my street. And, you know, and that's why we were hoping there would be more significant material changes that, you know, impacted the parking lot. And, you know, unfortunately, keeps, everything keeps being pushed back, you know, to the, you know, my neighbor, Mr. Carter, and it's going, you know, it's, 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 you know, it's two-hundred feet, but it's not material. And coming from, you know, going towards Middleton, and I know you don't want to hear about it, but the, the reason I wanted to see the change about the parking is because this prime gas station and this, you know, if this building will go into effect, there's going to be people coming out of prime, people coming out of, you know, this entrance, and then it's impossible to turn to our street. So, that, that was the part where we're hoping to see some change into. And there's a middle lane that people do not use properly. This is our biggest concern because, you know, we see so many, you know, people beeping at each other. I don't know if you're familiar with that area. It gets so congested, you know? We have young drivers in the, in the neighborhood, in the area. People are cutting through a neighborhood. So, you know, the whole, another entrance that we have to worry about, that, that was what was material and significant to us. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi. Nick Smalls, thirty Oxford Circle. Be real quick. I just think that very, very little has changed. There was variance required on all four sides before. It's still variance required. In fact, gotten worse. It was a non-conforming lot before, still a non-conforming lot. Everything that matters to a zoning board is exactly how it was before when they first voted against it. So, I just want to kind of declutter the conversation and focus on the most, remain parts which are non-conforming, still requires variance, has only gotten worse for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Laura Delmarco, seventy-four Colonial Ave. And I'm just going to take one minute of your time to mention a couple of cases that were referred to previously. And they are Rainey v. Board of Appeals of Nantucket and Clean v. Planning Board of Rentham. These changes that they've shown are not significantly different, and those are two references for you, just to throw in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing about the...
Okay. No, all right. So, I will give you guys... So I will give you guys the last word to say whatever you want, as long as it's not crazy, and then people would start yelling. So, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, because this was brought up when I went in and I had one of the TBA meetings, I believe it's called, the lot, unfortunately, when we looked into purchasing it and I first came to the town to begin with, it is non-conforming, and it will be non-conforming if you put a cereal box on it. That was, when I was at the meeting, it doesn't matter what you put on it, it will be a non-conforming lot, and as it stands, you will need a variance everywhere because of the size. I just wanted that clear.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you, everyone who made comments. Thank you for the presentation and the information. Phil, anything you want to add?
Just a reminder that when you hear material and significant changes, usually you think of major ones, but as you know from reading the case law...
Well, it's specific and material, not significant.
Specific.
Specific.
Right.
Which are, and I think those are two different things.
Yes.
So, so I think that's what we should focus on, whether or not they're specific and whether or not they're material.
And some of those, as you know, can be what we ordinarily would consider to be fairly minor, such as the paint color change on one job or roof color. To me, that's not a significant change, but it was ruled, deemed to be a significant change.
And, and the lot depends on the context, and it also depends on the local board, and generally, the local board is given a lot of deference in these situations. Like I said, I think from what we've read in the case law, it seems like there's this middle, right, if you completely change it, then you don't have to go through this procedure. If you make material changes, then, then we can vote that they're material and specific and send it back to the ZBIA. But there are some changes that aren't material enough that we could withhold our consent, and the question is, on which side of the line do these particular changes fall? And so I'd like to kind of get some discussion, people kind of given their, just either thoughts, comments, and then we can, then we can vote. Or we can just vote, I mean, whatever people want to do.
I mean, but, in, in my view, I don't think the changes are anywhere close to being material. And the reason is, I think the last gentleman stated, one is that it, the size of the lot's still the same, there's no attempt to increase the size of the lot in any shape or form, so that, from that point of view, it hasn't changed. If you look at the pictures before and after, you, they're virtually identical. The only thing that has changed is that the side setback is slightly smaller than it was before, what, what the applicant has done is traded, increasing the setback, the non-compliance in the back for making it smaller in the front. And I think one other thing is that if you look at it, the amount of impervious surface is actually greater in this version than it is in the, the prior one, because you're pushing the parking back and you need to have a longer driveway. So what you've done is you've pushed the parking closer to the back of the property. So to call basically four feet on one side and two-hundred square feet in size, material change, I don't see it matters. And I think the, probably the most critical one is that there was a reason why we put a hundred-foot setback in the front for properties like that, was a very, you know, maybe some people disagree with, but it was a fundamental part of the zoning bylaw. And to only change that by five feet is, in my mind, even particularly non-material. So I think for all those reasons, and I just don't see it as a material change or anywhere close to it.
Well, my perspective is that the setbacks are in place to mitigate the effects of development for the, the butters. And in this instance, the, the applicant was asking for four variances, and not only, we're not reducing the number of variances requested, we're actually gaining one. And I'm a big favor of, of people, of property owners, being able to have wide latitude, but based on what we have to review tonight, I, I have a hard time granting consent for this to go back to the zoning board.
I'm also, I tend to agree with what's already been said, and I also want to point out that in looking at the denial, what, what I understand the standard to be is that it has to be a specific and material change from the reason of the denial. And what the denial says, as I read it, is that the petitioner did not satisfy the provisions under Section four point one-three-one in the GB district, and that such a change or extension or alteration would adversely affect the neighborhood. And what I'm seeing in this picture is, if really part of the denial was because of an adverse impact on the neighborhood, what they've done is simply move, it's like they took the picture of the lot, they just shifted the box down a little bit, and, which has the impact of pushing this development further into the neighborhood, creating more impervious surfaces, as you said, and only a very minor shift in sort of the dimensions of the setbacks. So I, and what I see in the zoning board of appeals' most recent decision doesn't really change my mind, that this is, this does not feel like a significant change based on the reason of their initial denial. And so for that reason, I'm, I'm concerned about this.
No, anything?
No, I'm, I'm good. I expressed my concern earlier about, I've been more focused on, obviously, the, the dual-business approach with two storefronts. The parking doesn't seem like it would be adequate. The pushback, obviously, setting it back, and I, I don't see great difference in the, in the plans as well, so...
So my thoughts are that we heard a lot about the impact on the neighborhood. I, frankly, I don't really see that or put that much weight in that, but frankly, it doesn't matter, because if I, that's not relevant to this particular proceeding, whether it's a good business, whether a zoning board could ever give a variance to this type of project on this land. I don't see how they could, but again, that's not what we're considering. Under the case law, I don't, I see it as specific, I don't see it as material. I mean, it, to me, it looks like the same plan, it's the same building, you're using the four same, sinks or stalls or seat chairs, however you want to call it, it's, I mean, if you took off a wing, or you took off a section, or, or made it one build, one rather than two, maybe now we're talking material, you cut it in half, but two-hundred feet at the kind of, at the edges, making it a little bit smaller, not changing the parking in any significant factor. I just, in, in reading the case law, I don't see it as the same as relocating access or limiting a proposed use. And I know the color one, I, I'd say that, that's an abnormality. So based on the, our own review of our own bylaw and the fact that it does come back here for our consent, I also would not be inclined to grant consent to go back to the ZBIA. So I don't know if we want to have a motion in the, I think we can have a motion either way, so, motion to withhold consent?
The motion would be to hold consent as the board did not find material changes in the application.
Right, that it was not a, that there were not specific and material changes that would warrant the board granting its consent. I think that would be the motion.
So moved.
Second.
So the motion is that the board does not find that there have been specific and material changes, and therefore, the board is withholding its consent?
One thing, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, so we should close the public hearing?
Close the public hearings before you make your motion.
So a motion, close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed.
A motion is made, yeah.
Okay, so a motion made to withhold consent based on this board's finding that there have not been specific and material changes specifically, that the changes themselves are not material, that the same amount or more variances are required, that the changes in the size really are not material, and really, that the reason for the denial by the ZBIA was not materially changed.
Can I just ask a question or something?
Why, we're gonna vote, and then you can ask a question if you want. We're gonna vote. All right, well, go ahead, ask a question.
Yeah, the hearing's closed.
Yeah, the hearing's closed. We're done with the hearing.
Okay, we can't take any more testimony, yeah.
I just want, I know, but I just want to ask a question.
So we're gonna vote, and then you can ask a question.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. So the motion has been made?
A second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I voted, we were voting to withhold, which is an...
Yes.
Okay, I'm on board with that.
Okay, so hearing is over, vote has been made. Yeah, if you want to ask a question, you can ask a question.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned with how the, how the process works, because it's, it's interesting to me that at the last meeting, the structure style was such a big topic, and how it can just, without any, really any guidance to anybody who's applying, let you know, one way or the other, that, well, what was brought up and what was the major concern at one meeting is gonna have nothing to do with the next meeting.
Yep, so, so two things on that. One, can't give you any kind of advice on that, or legal advice on that. What I can say is that our job was different than the ZBAs job, and so our job was to really not look at, was to look at the findings and, and, and not necess, and what they, and especially their written findings, and use that as our basis, as well as the testimony. But, you know, it, it, we just didn't find that it was material. Even, even the aesthetics, I don't find changing that those are material, so... But you have rights of appeal that you can, that you can look into, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, then.
So in terms of entering something into the record, you want to do this, you have any change to say that's a denial?
So, so, everyone, we just, we still have some items on our agenda, so anyone who wants to talk, you guys just want to do that outside. So, I mean, you can, I think the motion was to withhold our consent based on a finding, and then kind of dictate the finding.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll look over. If you want, shoot it to me before it's in the final minutes, and then we'll...
Okay.
Or we can even look online, I mean, you can go back and watch it and...
Oh, yeah, definitely, and I'll shoot that, and then we'll finish that up.
Okay. MS four?
I have a question. Here's a question.
Well, we need to come back again, or only if they make specific and material changes.
If they have the right to appeal our decision? If there's, if there's something else filed, then there's something else filed, and we go through whatever process is required.
Thank you.
Nobody ever wants to stick around for the end of the...
It's always interesting stuff.
So a few, in your packet was a notice of intent related to the MS four permit, or the municipal separate stormwater sewer system permit. And I don't know if you're familiar with this, so I'll just give a quick rundown of what it is. It's a federal permit mandated by the Clean Water Act and managed by Mass D E P. The MS four permit is a type of permit under the Nuclear Discharge Elimination Systems or NUC program, and it requires municipalities to take extra steps to protect rivers, lake streams, ponds, or polluted stormwater runoff. And in this case, we need to update the NOI to kind of include how those would affect the Merrimack Valley watershed, in addition to which we currently have our, our systems in place to look at, say, the, the lake or, or wetlands. So again, this extends where we're looking at to include the Merrimack Valley watershed. And so we've been working with the firm Teague and Bond as our stormwater consultant, who's been assisting us with the preparation and compliance with the existing MS four stormwater permit. And you'll see in your packet is the updated NOI, which kind of has our plans on how we're going to meet the federal guidelines. And what we're looking to do is to submit the NOI for public, for a public hearing, either on Thursday, October the eighteenth, or Thursday, November the first. And realistically, we're probably looking closer at November the first, as the eighth is close. I don't know if you have any questions about the, the NOI, or specifically how that relates to, to planning? But under this permit, it, it has a public education and outreach component, an illicit discharge detection and eliminate, eliminations piece, and that's where bylaws and things might, might fall under. It also looks at construction site runoff control, post-construction, stormwater management, and good housekeeping, so that's things like stormwater cleanup and, and street sweeping and, and other things like that. So we'd love to get your input.
So, I mean, what would you recommend to us is appropriate response on something like this? I mean, is it, is this a huge deal, what they're doing, or is it business as usual, or...
Well, MS four is kind of a pain, because it, it adds requirements where basically anytime water goes over, like, the street, you now have to, like, treat it and, and deal with it, whereas before it was just in, in certain areas. So now, like, anytime it goes over your, your roads or something, you have to, it's just a lot more expensive for cities and towns than you permitting.
But it's also looking at things like, okay, increasing or decreasing the amount of illicit discharge, so that might be now looking at how you treat pet waste, or how you treat fertilizers. And as of right now, we're looking at fertilizer and just the watershed, but now that we're including the Merrimack Valley watershed as well, then you kind of have to look at, okay, well, how do we, how do we comply with what we're being mandated with in this area as well? So there's a couple of things you want to look at in terms of this, so...
All right. And then minutes, you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September sixth.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything else? Good job, that was unexpectedly...
Lively.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people there, I guess. I was hard trying to find a place to park.
We're a lot of people.
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
How, you think they'll appeal that? Do you think...
Hold on, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.